Mr. Chairman, we have called this meeting. We received our final digest numbers from the county Tuesday at 10:00. And Ms. Holloway, Ms. Holloway has worked diligently to come up with a budget. Of course, you know there's a couple of components to make sure that you're going to have your money to operate with for the upcoming fiscal year, and that is looking at tax digest versus your millage to equal your budget. So that's what we're here to talk about, the tentative budget and tentative millage. And first, we will talk about the budget timeline.
We'll start with that, and then we'll roll into the budget. So Dr. Watney, if you'll.
Yes, ma'am.
As Mr. Henson stated, we received our final numbers on our tax digest on Tuesday. So we're able to now move again with our timeline. Of course, we're meeting tonight to approve the tentative budget and timeline. And on Friday, tomorrow, by 4:00 p.m., I'll get the ad for the budget to our legal organ, the News Observer. I have it until 4:00 p.m. And then we will advertise on Wednesday, September the 10th, the display ad of the budget. And then we'll come back on September 25th at 5:00 p.m. to approve the final budget. So if you will, after the week tonight, put that down on your calendar, September 25th at 5:00 p.m.
And I guess you noticed we didn't have any hearings in there, Mr. Chairman. So those people who've been covering this long time probably have figured out that we've got some pretty good news, we feel like, for the county. Next would be our Fannin County BOE FY15 tentative budget. You want me to just start with the good news?
Yeah, you give the good news.
All right, here's the good news. For the first time, and I don't know when, we have a balanced budget. Mr. Chairman, we will not deficit spend this spending year. And I think that's because, one is, we'll talk a little bit more about it. I'll tell you what, before we get into the reasons, let Ms. Holloway just go ahead and explain the budget for us.
We'll go through some of the components of what's built into this budget. It is built off of the millage rate of 12.9, which we'll go into more detail in the next section. It is for 180 days for students, 190 days for teachers. It's built so we can pay the single portion on employees' health, the bonds plan, and the single portion for employees on the dental. You guys may remember, we shared with you all-
Which have been benefits that this board has awarded to each of us.
Right. We received a letter some time back, not from the governor's office notifying us that we were going to receive additional QBE allotments, but it was very specific how we were going to spend that money. We were to either eliminate furlough days, which we didn't have in Atlanta. We were to increase instructional days, which we already were at the maximum. And we were to increase teacher salaries. And we have chosen to increase staff salaries, and we're going to do so, if you guys are in agreement. We're going to give all system employees a $950 one-time supplement based off of the governor's recommendation, and we'll do that in the September paycheck.
Let me go into a little more detail with that. The additional QBE money the governor sent out to us to use for that was possibly $518,000. And when we looked at that $518,000, and looked at the number of employees we had, we could, you know, it's not firm, but it would be about a 2% raise if we divided that $518,000 out. Here's the problem that we saw with that. If you were a bus driver, you know, that would equate to your paycheck for the entire year before your benefits and your retirement, they're only paying you $49. Our highest paid employee would have gained $1,800 from that. We felt like our employees had had to go so long without any additional raises. In fact, we've taken 2% of their local supplement out back several years ago. We felt like those employees who probably were on the lower end of the pay scale, they were probably most affected by the years and years and years. So what we decided to do was just take that $518,000, instead of giving a percent raise, we divided it by the number of employees we had, it was $950, and we think that's a fair way to do it. That's a fair way to order it. We don't know that we'll get this money from the governor again, so that's why we say it's one time, and that's why we'll put it in the September check. And of course, that $950 is before benefits. But we felt like that was a good way to make sure the entire system could benefit. It blew me away when we ran the figures back here, and I saw that our bus drivers thought that would equate to $49 for them and some of our other employees, our service employees. And you know what, they're part of the school system, so. So, you know, with the board's blessing, I guess we're asking you to approve that in this budget. And I'll tell you, we've run this out long and hard, looked at it from many different angles. So honestly, before we saw the final numbers, I was a little bit jealous of the $518,000 because I thought, wow, you know what, that would really help us for all the years of deficit spending we've had. With that said, because of the issues of getting the digest out, because we've had to do spending resolutions, we actually got to close our books and make our ending year adjustments. So what we're showing you here is not guesswork. This is the final problem. Dr. Watney, it's this one.
You did comment that you weighed your-
I did weigh, I did weigh my $950 because we just, it's just the right thing to do. So anyway, you said this is going to be in this budget, and it's going to be paid this month, except you-
That's correct. So as I present financial-
This budget you're approving, remember, goes back to July 1st.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
We're on.
That's right.
I hear you're thinking the county government, they're all in different cycles than we are. And as Mr. Henson stressed, with all indications, this extra money that was funded in our QBE for fiscal year 15 is just that, a one-time, one-time shot. So we knew, that kind of boxed us in of our options because we had to sustain whatever we did. So the best way we saw was just to distribute it to all employees as a one-time supplement.
I bet a lot of systems have had more because we were so well doing for 180 days already and everything.
There were systems, I went to find a recent poll, superintendents, how you tend to use this money. And, you know, typical response from people who have had furlough days or who had, weren't at the 190-day construction, they're going to use that money there.
We were definitely in the minority of school systems that had the issue of sharing this as a raise versus reducing furlough days or increasing student days.
This couldn't come at a more timely, often times than it has been for the last 10 years.
I agree. I agree. I, y'all, for the first time, probably six or seven years, I left this place feeling pretty good Tuesday, so let's keep moving.
Some other components, we did have some increases in our workers' compensation rates. We had increases in our employer contribution for teachers' retirement system. Our school nutrition, we are going to transfer $253,700 to that department.
And here's why we offer free breakfast. Before the recession started, we would, what would you say, not compensated, but-
Supplemented.
Supplemented the school nutrition breakfast, or school nutrition program because of free breakfasts. Now, when we started going into the recession, I pulled all the books in, and she had the fund balance. So I told her, I said, "It's not possible for us to keep, continue to supplement your program while you've got a fund balance over here because we're doing everything we do." So she graciously said, "I understand." And in this year, she's spent her fund balance to zero. So this is a good timely thing that happened because we have a balanced budget, so we can afford to do this. Last night, sitting at home, we get this ASA, which is American Superintendents Association or something along those lines, and it had an article in there about how important free, not free breakfast, but breakfast was for children. And I would commend this school system since I was a wet behind the ears teacher. We have offered free breakfast to our students, and I think it's a wonderful thing that we do. So I think that's money well spent because we know that students who have been fed in the morning are more ready to learn. And you know, you hear a lot of school systems say, "You need to eat before the test, and you need to eat before every day starts, whether you're being tested that day or not, so that you can learn the knowledge to take the test."
I think this board's pretty well set on having that. That's something we want.
Yeah, and so I want.
Another component of this budget is to restore administrator days that were cut back when we had to make budget cuts.
Now, let me correct. We've said we don't have furlough days. What we look at is what we consider furlough is if we cut you from 190 back. Our administrators, of course, have extra days in the summer they work, and I'll brag about our administrators. When this recession started, we were sitting wringing our hands about what we could do, and we were back there in the room where we meet, and one of them, who's now retired, said, "I'll tell you what, I'll give five days out." So they all, all the administrators, and that's our directors and people in this office and our principals, they all gave those days. So we feel like we can finally restore those days for them so that we truly don't have furlough at this point.
Dr. Watney, if you'll scroll to the top of this document, just to kind of go through the four categories we have. Our first is the general fund. That's where our emphasis has been tonight. We have the debt service fund. I'm proud to say it's zero for expenditures or revenue because this board has made the decision that we will pay as we go on SPOST projects. And then the third category is capital project funds. That is a combination of SPOST funds and money that the board in prior years has set aside for capital projects. And the fourth category, special revenue funds. This is school nutrition program and all of our federal programs such as Title I, Title II, Title 6B for special ed, Title II A programs of that sort. That's SPOST, let's kind of go back to that. I mean, this to me is-
So SPOST funds are in the capital projects fund?
Yes, sir. That's in our third category. And let's look at the expenditures for that third category. We have $453,000 set aside for instruction, 140 for pupil services, 25 for media, 425 for transportation, 142,000 for nutrition, and 2.5 million for construction services. The way SPOST III referendum was wrote, it allows us to do much more than capital projects. And you can see, I think if we add up all of those other categories, that's around 1.2 million, just looking at the numbers just roughly, that-
Let's talk about how we offset. I want to tell you, one of the reasons where we are today is because of SPOST and because of the way the referendum was written. We can go back this year, and money that we would have had to spend out of the general fund, out of our general operating expenses. We have developed a chart that tells us what all we bought with that 1.2 million dollars, which was-
Buses, driver's education vehicle, cameras for buses, school nutrition equipment, textbooks, media materials, and technology equipment.
And see, none of those things were things that we really had an option on whether to purchase. Those were things we had to have. We had written, when we realized how bad the recession was, we wrote the last SPOST to include things like buses and textbooks. And of course, we had the blessing of the lawyers, too, who write these. And then, of course, this was voted on referendum. That saved us 1.2 million dollars out of our general fund. That's significant. You know, the great thing about that was, I was in town Monday talking to a restaurant owner, and I said, "Hey, I'll try to come here and eat Sunday night." And he said, "You know what, it was so busy here Sunday, we were turning people out till after 8:30. We couldn't handle the number of people coming in." I didn't see a single person down there Monday night. I knew, so I can tell you, Sunday night, a lot of those people were from Atlanta, Florida. I saw a lot of Florida tags, but I was trying to find a parking place. The great thing is, they paid a lot of that 1.2 million dollars toward what we would have taken out of our general fund. And here's something that we'll talk about at the meeting, but I just want to share this while we're talking about SPOST. Do you realize, for the June SPOST payment this month, we received $418,064.65? Since that's the highest SPOST since, I had this kind of, since August of, I'm sorry, Sep-, no, am I looking at the right one? Since September of '06. So SPOST is so much more than buildings. And a lot of things that we did, like putting roofs on and stuff, I saw Mike Queen out of Mr. Lewis's shop the other day. And I don't know if y'all know Mike, but he was a board member years ago, worked for TBA, was in the school system, then worked for TBA. We were standing on the porch, and he said, "I want to tell you something." He said, "That SPOST is unreal." He said, "We used to sit in board meetings," and I'm sure Mr. Lewis was following in some of these, "till 11, 12 o'clock at night, just trying to figure out where we're going to get the money to repair our roof on the building." We sure don't have to worry about that now. So, you know, things that we don't even think about anymore coming out of general operating funds like roofs, they used to. I can tell you what buildings were like back in those days. We had Dawson County coming up today just to look at some of our infrastructure, and they went away in rest.
Good illustration is our, what's it called, maintenance depot or where the maintenance didn't work out, where they'd been. If you've been through it, it's been that way until it was corrected this, just this upcoming, this year, past year.
Yeah. So we can't emphasize how important SPOST is to this school system. And I wanted people to understand, one of the reasons we're going to celebrate a balanced budget here tonight is squarely on SPOST's shoulders.
Exactly. Because a lot of those expenditures would have to be incurred regardless of how they were funded. But the fact that they're being paid out in that third category versus the first one helps relieve some of our expenditures.
And you know, I buy things in Fannin County, and I'm sure we all have, but people who are coming here in more and more, in bigger and bigger numbers, are helping offsetting our property taxes by the use of SPOST. I can't emphasize that enough.
I always think of safety when I think of SPOST because it improves the facilities and everything gradually gets safer.
Well, you know, here's a small example people don't think about. Numbered rooms, you know, anymore, when you've got, when you've got intruder plans and stuff, you have to know your room numbers. Our high school, over the years, room numbers kind of got discombobulated, and those things are pretty expensive. And what we want to do is, we brought all the elementary schools are now all standardized as far as the way those number plates look and how they're mounted on the walls in schools. We won't do that in the high school. You know, SPOST is going to help us do that. Does a little bit of things people don't even think about.
Camera.
Yep, cameras. We had a bus incident. Luckily, we had a report of a kind of a, not our bus, but something that happened around the bus that could have been a dangerous situation. We have a camera that looked out the windshield of that bus, and now we're going to be able to correct some things, so.
Dr. Watney, if you will minimize this document, and we are not for sure the name of it.
Okay. Go back to this.
The general fund five-year comparison. This is expenditure comparison from fiscal year 2011, fiscal year 2015 for the general fund. And we'll concentrate on the 14-15. Fiscal year 14, our general fund budget for expenditures was $29,548,455. And fiscal year 15, $29,923,311, with an increase overall of $374,856. But you can see broken down what's increased and decreased by function. And that'll be on the far right side, Mike.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to share that.
Okay, so.
So back to our budget. We're at the point where we're ready to approve the tentative budget, and then-
Is that in there?
Yeah, I don't know where it's at.
She has to write a garbage for this because she's so particular. Uh, okay, I would recommend that the board approve the FY15 tentative, I'm going to put this word in there, balanced budget.
Do I have a motion, superintendent's ready to approve that fiscal year 15 budget timeline?
It's a loop.
I have said, I have said, any discussion. All in favor?
Fiscal budget timeline.
Okay, so now we're going to go back to age of the 15 budget timeline. So now we've got, we've got our tentative budget, now we've got to get it in place. So you can see, we went over this a little bit earlier. I would ask, now that we have our tentative budget, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the FY15 budget timeline as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve the FY15 budget timeline?
I'm there.
About a second. Any discussion? I-
Okay, we're going to kind of do the same thing here. So the first thing we've got is the 2014 millage timeline.
Just to run through the timeline with you all, it's very similar. As Mr. Henson stated, we received the numbers on Tuesday, and at that point, we contacted board members in the media to set up a meeting for tonight to approve a tentative millage and timeline. We will, based off of what is approved tonight, we will advertise in the newspaper, get that to them by 4:00 p.m. on Friday. It will go in the paper Wednesday, September 10th, and we will come back and meet this board Thursday, September 24th at 5:30. So we need you guys available both at 5:00 o'clock and 5:30 on Thursday, September 24th.
Bad news is, Ms. Walton will be out of town in cases that day. She's usually our entertainment at hearings like that, so we've got to find somebody else who can talk for 30 minutes. You're being so-
All right, let's go to-
What are you going to do next?
Let's look at, you want to start with the comparison?
Here's something that I found interesting. I was sitting at the house last night, and I thought, I'd like to know, you know, the press said that the recession started in 2008. Actually, for us, we could feel the effects of it in 2007 by judging by our SPOST numbers. But we're going to take the widely defined definition that started in 2008. We had a millage at 12.9, and you can see, I've gotten darkened out. Gilmore, when the recession started, their millage rate was, and this is the school millage rate, so this is not combined county and school systems. You can see that Gilmore started the recession at 14.9, and at the end of 2014, their millage rate is, and they've already said it is 17.3. Murray County's been fairly consistent, but Murray County, they've cut 20 days from their student count. You know, they don't even start now till, well, after Labor Day over there. They haven't set theirs yet, I don't know why. Pickens County, you can see when the recession started, it was 14.47. Today, it's 16.1. Union County, who's always traditionally been lower than us and who's our adversary, and we're going to be at the ballgame, where I had to wear a purple shirt today, so we're hoping their superintendent's going to wear blue. But they were at 8.898, and in 2014, they are at 11.791. The budget, or the millage that we're going to propose tonight is actually going to be, our rollback is actually going to be a cut in the taxes for the taxpayers of Fannin County. So we're going to be on rollback, so we started the recession at 12.9. We're here where we have finally a balanced budget, we're going to be 12.9. And I'm proud to say, this board never furloughed a teacher. You know, we had orders from the governor one year that we were to furlough a couple days, but this board never chose to furlough a teacher. And I want to give credit to this board for the financial oversight that they have provided this county throughout this rough economic time. You know, I think we had our heads in the right places during the instructional time. We made sure that we tried to take care of our children. We all tried to take care of employees during this time. And foresight of always having a fund balance for a rainy day helped carry us through this. And I think it's just a testament that we started at 12.9. Yeah, we had the bump last year, but now we're going to propose a millage rate of 12.9 where we started the recession in 2008, and it's going to balance the budget. We don't ever have, we, I would say, we won't ever have to worry about it. This year, where I always caution that we might have to move money out of the fund balance or we all had to move some designated money over, that's not going to happen.
One more time, we're not just rolling it back, we're legitimately lowering the millage rate.
We're lowering the millage rate. I'm going to give an example, we'll keep talking through this.
That's good timing. Let's roll into our computation of millage rollback. And we'll talk through pieces of that, and if you guys want to discuss, we can. This is a spreadsheet. It's the Department of Revenue provides us. It's the BT 321, and it's the computation of millage rate rollback and percentage increase in property taxes. This spreadsheet is provided to us by the Georgia Department of Revenue, and we are required to use it to determine our rollback millage rate. Each year, there are two types of value changes made to the county tax digest. There is the change due to inflation, and then there is the change due to new or improved properties. And I always get, because we have several variables, it gets me kind of confused. So we're going to kind of just run through just how the sheet is built, and then Mr. Henson will share how we got to where we are. Dr. Watney, let's stay at the top. The yellow shaded cells, these are numbers that are provided to us by the tax assessors and tax commissioners' office. On the left, you have the 2013 digest numbers, and on the right, you have the 2014 digest numbers. And then in the middle, this is the other variable, the reassessment of existing real property. You have the real property and the exemptions listed there. So that, the yellow are numbers that are provided to us by tax assessors and tax commissioners. Then all of your dark gray cells that are up here, that's part of this Excel spreadsheet where there are formulas embedded, and that does the automatic calculations to get us down to this section here. And what we find in this section, the net value added from the reassessment of existing real property is $89,906,948. And then the other net changes to taxable digest is $53,345,352. And what that is, is this number, or excuse me, this number minus that number. So after we plug in these numbers in the spreadsheet, we calculate, and it tells us from Fannin County that we have a rollback of 12.9. Here we go.
12.9.
Excuse me, 12.913. So we are proposing not only a rollback, but also a decrease in millage of .013 mills for a millage rate of 12.9. This will set our Board of Education millage one mill less than it was last year. And as we said, last year's rate was 13.9, and the 12.9 is rolling it back .987, and additionally cutting, as Mr. Stanley pointed out, the rate .013 mills. Since we've rolled the millage back beyond the rollback rate, our next step is to advertise the current 2014 tax digest and five-year history of levy, and we'll run that in the News Observer, and then meet again to set the final millage rate.
Now, let's say all this in non-accountable terms. We all know, the budget's over here, and you've got two multiplier, two multipliers to equal your budget. You've got, everybody knows this, the millage rate, but a lot of people don't realize that the property digest is another multiplier. All right? So everybody knows if the millage rate goes up, you've got tax increase. But what people don't understand is if the digest goes up and you leave your millage rate alone, it's tax increase. You can even decrease your millage rate if the digest goes up enough, and it looks like it's a tax decrease, but it's still a tax increase because you haven't hit the rollback rate. What the state says the rollback rate is, is where you look at what property was valued at, digest, what your millage rate was, what your property previous year. If your digest grows, then in order to not levy a tax increase, you have to come back to the rollback rate, which is 12.913. So Elaine's house, even though it has been reassessed, we'll say, and gone up, because we've rolled back to 12.913, she won't see a tax increase. It would be even. But since we've rolled back to 12.9, even though her assessment went up, she'll actually see a tax decrease on that house. Now, I don't know what county is going to do, so this is just talking from a schools, school tax term. So, you know, my dad-in-law, tightest man that ever lived, he told me the other day, he said, "You know, they reassessed my business in town, reassessed my house, done this." He said, "You know, here I am," I don't tell his age, "but I'm going to have to get a second job, which a bunch of whoopie." But basically, since he didn't have any new properties or, he didn't have, what are we calling it, new property, what do we call it?
Real growth.
Real property growth, where he's modified his house, added a room or what was it, he'll actually pay less in school taxes, even if his assessment went up this year than he did last year.
Just the- Just a one, one zero difference. Does that mean you had a budget that was that much more efficient?
Well, I don't know if, I don't know that that's not really what it indicates. It indicates how much below the rollback rate we are.
That's good timing for us to look at.
Which means you managed more efficiently.
Well, I'll brag on our school system. Last year, it was tight and principals and, I'll get tired here, we say, you know, times are tight. We need to hold back as much as we can so we gather some efficient management in the budget.
But let's look at the five-year history. We actually are going to get the, not quite...
What does that mean?
It's, yeah, it's the next attachment. Okay. We'll get it pulled up. Since we have the two multipliers, the increase due to inflation and the increase due to new or improved properties, if you look on the far right column at the bottom, we're actually going to bring in seven hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred and two dollars more taxes, which is a four point six-four percent increase over last year.
So how can we do that? How can we do that after we've just said we're lowering taxes on existing properties? Let's think of Walmart. This time last year, it's pretty much just an open chunk of land, wasn't it? Now there's a multimillion dollar building. That was a new or improved property. So those people who didn't, if, if they made an improvement to the property or they built new, something new on property, sure, that went onto the tax digest. If they had had it the previous year, it wouldn't have and it wouldn't have shown up in that. Does that make sense? We always get questions on this. So that's how we got that four point six-four. That tells me that, that we're finally seeing growth out there. And I heard sixty-some odd housing permits maybe issued this month or this year. And I think we heard Gilmer's way off of that. So, you know, that's, that's an indicator of what you get when you get growth in people building and people improving their homes and improving their property. So that's how that comes.
One thing about that too, now, when the inflationary growth, uh, the growth there, some of the senior citizens that qualify, they have an exemption to go up and match that off, so they will be, you know, they should be okay too.
Mr. Hinson pointed out, if you look at the bottom of these, like, 2010, if you come along, here we go. It was negative point two-five percent, negative point two-three, and then positive point nine-nine. It did go up significantly in 2013 to six point four-four, but we increased the millage from 12.9 to 13.9. So you would expect that to go up. And then even with us reducing the millage one mill, there still is some growth on that real growth side that Mr. Hinson stated. So that is additional money, Mr. Ruiz, that we will have from the budget. And it was built into that budget.
Okay, so everybody understanding. How's the time? All right, so where do we go next? All right, so, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that the board approve the 2014 tentative millage rate at 12.9 mills, which is a tax decrease for taxpayers of Fanning County, as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve the 2014 millage timeline at 12.9 mills? You have the motion. I have some. Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay. At this time, I would ask that the board approve the 2014 millage timeline that we looked at under, out of a...
Do I have a motion to approve said millage timeline? I have some. Any discussion? All in favor?
I want to tell you, Mr. Chairman, last year when I had raised millage one mill, that was, that was actually a heartbreaking situation for me and this board at the time. So I am glad that we can, when we, I, I won't brag on the board, y'all are good stewards of, thank you, sir. stewards of taxpayers' money, you know, where we find ourselves in a balanced budget. This board is willing to lower, brought this back to the rollback rate, but actually lower our taxes here. You know, we're all part of this community. I have to break bread with everybody out there. It is a, a weird feeling to be sitting here with a balanced budget and, and a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel after all these years. But I can honestly say the light came a lot quicker because of the fiscal management of this board and the boards before it and the superintendents before me. I want to give them credit also because, you know, when, when we saw crazy, what I call the crazy money time from about 2002 to about 2006, when people were spending money like crazy. We saw school systems all around us buying tons of land and building all sorts of types of buildings. We resisted that. And I think that's one of the things that helped get us through where we are. You know, I heard one time when we were going through our SACS evaluation, some of the stakeholders said, you know, you don't have to build new buildings like that in Atlanta. But we've done it. But we've got buildings that we've taken care of in a responsible manner. Like I said, I had Dawson County up here today look at some of our facilities and they were blown away that that high school was built in 1976 because we constantly retrofitted our buildings and we've been good stewards of taxpayers' money. We have managed for tough times. And you know, that's, you know, people say, why does the government have a fund balance? The reason the government has a fund balance is to put us in a situation where we can weather tough times. I want to commend the board for that too. I, I can't say nothing. I want to thank Ms. Holloway back here. I still have to put a quarter in the jar. I hadn't called Ms. Jackson yet. I want to thank her. She has, she, she has knocked herself out. Lee Wood has knocked herself out, making sure that we had numbers in time. You know, me and her sat over here in this room and I had to encourage her to go on a trip that she'd already planned because she wanted to stay here and get those numbers. And we should have been timed, even though we were kind of a day behind for the, we were going to date when we got the final numbers. So me and her, her staff for this, they did a wonderful job for us. With that said, I'm done.
I just want to say it's a whole different attitude this year than it was last year. So good job. Anything else? Don't comment. The only time the millage was raised, it was kids first. Absolutely.
That was hard. You know, like I said, I've got parents that live here on fixed income. We were, we don't do these things lightly. And when we get in a position where we can give back some of that, we're starting to do that. I know this school is hard. I know we are.
Elaine?
I've got a brief comment, and I will be brief because I want to say most of my comments are ready to be when our, when our director here. But I've often said it's an honor to be part of this system. There's so much about this team that the general public does not know. They probably didn't know that our administrators and all of our directors and our principals voluntarily took those five days to pay off. Did they miss five days of work? I'm so sure. How about the, and, and our, and our, our staff members who are 49% who give far in excess of 49%, 49% working effort. I've never been a part of a team that's so willing to work together, to pull together, and to endure the difficult economic times that we have experienced over the past several years. And as an economist, I will tell you that if you survive those times, you come out more efficient and stronger. And the, the efficiency improvements that we've put into our system, our power management, our, our energy management program, just as one example, is, puts us in so much better shape than we were before. So we're coming out stronger, we're coming out leaner, we're more efficient. And when I look at this millage rate comparison and I think about Board of Education buildings in other counties and I see these huge increases in millage rate, it baffles me. I don't, and, and they're following teachers and cutting back instructional days. I'm, I'm so proud to be a part of this team and so thankful for the generosity and the staff and the leadership that we had so. They love education. They love this system. And it's so obvious in their actions and their attitude and the way they conduct. It's just a great part of this, to be part of the team. I'll, I'll stop to that.
And there's five mills of that that's...
Yeah, it goes, well, they've put the state with holes in QBD. But the five mills, because we are the seventh or eighth wealthiest county, we send to be redistributed to some very needy counties that don't have a digest that can support a number of kids. But then also some of it goes to places like Walnut County. So, so, you know, we've been pretty good.
I have a, I have a meeting in this month in the Walnut County building where they hold their Board of Education meetings. It seats 900, it can expand and seat more. The recess monitors in the ceiling and flush seating. Well, some of the very furniture in this office, they're getting this, we're going to have picked up from. It's about a marvel at the efficiency of this, of this system, and I'm so proud of you.
Have you got anything else?
Nita.
That reminds me. It's been a long time.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? I have some.
Thank you all.